The hour is seven o'clock. Having arrived, I'll call the council to order that the role reflected all council members are present. And a quorum has been established. Council, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 5th. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. First tonight, we have a presentation that is going to be done for, by Brian in regards to the Comcast transfer. However, what we're going to do is that we're going to have that right before we have that item on the agenda, which is under administration. So we'll hold on that. Before we begin, though, I would like to announce a couple of things that some people are aware of. Tonight, I'd like to note, on a sad note, we had a passing of, last week, of David Legler. David Legler was a Hastings City council member. He served from 1978 to 1982. And we like to keep Dave's sons, Eric and Matt, in our thoughts and prayers. Also, many of you know that last Friday, we learned of the passing of former State Representative Jerry Dempsey. He was a friend to many of us here on the city council. We worked with Jerry on a lot of projects for Hastings, including the La Duke Mansion, the Aquatic Center, and trail development. And so if I can ask that we have a moment of silence for Mr. Legler and Jerry Dempsey. Please, please stand. Okay, tonight, we're going to begin, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief of Police, Chief Schaefer, and we'll have the swearing in of reserve officers, Chris Flack and Georgianne Freeman. Chief, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here, and our new officers.
Good evening, Your Honor, and fellow council members. I am very excited tonight to be able to introduce our two newest police reservists. Many of you know, and the community should realize, that our police reservists handle most all of our special events every year. This year, I just got the report from our lieutenant, over 5,500 hours of volunteer work for the community this year. And we did that with approximately 15 or 16 reserves, because we did lose a few that went on to law enforcement careers this year. So, tonight, we're very proud to introduce to you Georgianne Freeman and Chris Flack. And I just want to say a couple of words about each of them before they're sworn in. Georgianne Freeman is a lifelong resident of Hastings. She's currently a student at the University of Minnesota. She's majoring in sociology of law, criminology, and deviance, with a minor in leadership. She anticipates graduating this fall. She said that this is going to be a great opportunity for her to get some real-life experience in dealing with people as she moves on to a full-time, hopefully, a full-time law enforcement career. She enjoys volunteering at the schools and guiding youth now as part of some of the volunteer work she does with the university. So, we've talked a lot about youth of the last few years, and this is a great addition to our staff. Chris Flack was born in Michigan. He attended the University of Michigan, and after completing his undergraduate studies, he enrolled in the University of Minnesota to pursue a doctoral degree. He graduated from the U with a PhD in English. So, I'm sure he'll be writing some pretty nice police reports for us.
[Laughter]
He resides in Hastings. He's been here for just a little over three years. He said he'd like to take a more active role in the community. He has volunteered in the past and enjoys volunteering, and believes this is going to be a new and exciting venture for him outside of what he's been accustomed to in his studies. So, with that, I would like to have the clerk swear them in, if you could, please.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the ordinances of the City of Hastings, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a reserve police officer for the City of Hastings, counties of Dakota and Washington, and State of Minnesota, according to the best of my judgment and ability. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for their actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve.
Thank you, Chief, and to the new officers, welcome. You'll find that we have an outstanding police department and an outstanding reserve force. And you're becoming members of a great team, and we very much appreciate your volunteerism and helping us out. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your dedication. Next, we have Tennis Sanitation is here to give out the youth green team proceeds, Team Servant Road, which is formerly Mission Mexico. Stacy, welcome to the meeting.
Good evening, thank you. So we have Tim and a few folks from Servant Road here tonight. They've collected a total of 34.64 tons for quarter four of 2014. Their proceed amount is $519.64.
Great.
Good job.
Would someone from the group introduce themselves and the rest of the group that are here?
Sure. I'm Tim Mellesmoen, part of the board. In fact, what we have are all board members here. We have Christine Rogers, we have Angela Brook, all right, Tim Spitzack and Carrie Nygaard. And we really appreciate the opportunity presented by Tennis, as this will start our seed money for helping defray the costs of our next trip with the youth of Hastings.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, and thank you for your involvement. It's greatly appreciated.
And then I've also issued Melanie the revenue share check tonight as well for $2,034.72.
Thank you very much, Stacy.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. Next, we have an update on the tourism board activities and future action. Michelle Jacobs here, President of the Hastings Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Michelle, we're very glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some materials that were included in your packet, so if you have any questions on those, please let me know. In addition to the ongoing advertisements that we do in various publications, last year, the Tourism Bureau Board took a little different approach, and we switched into two different modes. We had the Hooked on Hastings Fishing Tournament Task Force and the Galpals Worey Task Force. So there were two different things, angles, that we were trying out. So the Hooked on Hastings brought the Master Wali Circuit to Hastings, and the Galpals Worey is a grant that we received from Minnesota Office of Tourism to try to attract some of those ladies' nights, markets, shares. So, those we are still working on. The Galpals will continue. Joan Morrison from our office coordinates all the advertising. She also attends the Confluence meetings, St. Croix Valley Tourism Alliance meetings, Metro Tourism meetings, so we have kind of a partnership with those agencies as well. In 2015, we're regrouping, bringing the whole group together again, so our two task forces will again become one tourism board, and hopefully provide a little more cohesiveness to some of the efforts that we're going to look at. On the forms that I gave you, I just want to point out that the tax, you'll see the lodging tax sometimes is way up, sometimes way down. If the tax is low, I just want to let you know, it doesn't necessarily indicate that occupancy was bad. When Flint Hills Resources or Exel has one of their switchovers, and there's a large number of staff here, if they are here more than 30 days, they do not pay the tax. So, it's not necessarily indicative of the occupancy. So, we do have audits conducted each year for the chamber in accordance with our agreement with the city, so if you have a burning desire to review audits, they are available for you. So, does anyone have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Um, Michelle, thank you for the information. I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me what the management fee entails?
The management fee is what the chamber collects for the staff in the office and running the operations of the Tourism Bureau. It covers all the staff payroll. There's no Tourism Bureau staff, per se, so it covers the chamber staff expenses.
And would you consider that to be like halftime? Or how would you, if there's $21,000 in management fee that is used for your staff in the office based on the tourism, is that 50% of their time, 30% of their time?
For Joan, it is most of her time. She is primarily the Tourism Bureau person. Chris, it's more the guest walk-ins and mailings and that type of thing. So, then my time in there, so it's primarily, I would say, 80% Joan, maybe 20% Chris.
You're at 100.
20% Michelle. You know, I mean, as far as my time when we divvy this up.
Okay. And, Your Honor, one more, if I could. I'm looking at the sheet that's got the various ads and stuff that were taken out, and please excuse my ignorance of not understanding the new technology. Or maybe it's just, and it's not your fault, it's maybe how the Des Moines Register classifies things. But you've got total views on some things at 70,000, and then it'll say total clicks 46.
I think some of them have it, and I'm with you, and Joan reported it, it's confusing as well. Some are done if it's by an iPad versus if it's done by a mobile versus if it's done by, so it's click-throughs versus actual clicks. So, the ad itself is not just the web. So if there's, we have an actual ad in a Des Moines Register versus, and as well as the website. So it's the way that they're reporting it, and you're right, it is confusing. I'll have to have Joan clarify that.
Okay, because it's like, if it says there's 70,000 total views and only 46 people click on it, it's like, I don't understand.
That's on their website, that's multiple panels. That's, you know what I mean? So if you look at a website, if you go look at a community, and you'll see several panels down the side, they may, of those, looking at those ads, the whole site had 70,000, but our clicks on that. Does that clarify that a little bit?
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions?
And I do want to clarify that the dues that are posted on there are for the Minnesota Lodging Association in St. Croix Valley. The Tourism Bureau does not pay the chamber membership dues, so I just want to clarify that those 500 is for those two organizations, not the chamber.
Okay. Is there any further questions? Thank you, and we look forward to tonight. Are we from tonight?
Yeah.
We'll see you at the annual chamber dinner. Okay, counsel, then our last presentation tonight is from Mary Shidey of the Pleasant Hill Library. Mary, welcome. Nice to see you again here at the council.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for having me. This month, Dakota County Library has launched a Raise a Reader campaign to increase awareness of the importance of early childhood literacy. The primary message of the campaign is, kids who read grow up to succeed. And so we have all kinds of bright, new graphics that have just been installed this last week at Pleasant Hill Library. We know that early literacy helps kids get ready to learn to read by the time they enter kindergarten, do better in school, stimulate their imagination, and develop a love of lifelong learning. Some of the new displays and graphics that we have for the campaign emphasize that reading helps kids go anywhere, do anything, and be anyone. They feature pictures of people in different occupations. We have graphics that are on the floor, so we have decals on the carpet, we have graphics above the book stacks and in the children's area and in the lobby. Just last week, right after we had the messages installed, someone overheard a young boy say, "Dad, I want to be an astronaut," because he saw these new graphics. And then he immediately changed his mind and said, "I want to be a deep sea diver." So there's all kinds of different occupations that are portrayed there. Our first Raise a Reader event at Pleasant Hill is on Thursday, February 12th, at 6:30 PM, and this is an event for parents or caregivers to come with their children, ages zero to six, for a Fun with Science and Math program. That's just an example of the kinds of programs that will be running for the campaign. And the entire campaign will go through the month of May, and is focusing on early literacy with children between the ages of zero and six. For adult readers, running right now through the end of February, is our Winter Jackets Reading Program. This is an annual reading program that you may recall hearing about in the past. It's for those that are 18 years and older, and really encourages them to take the time to enjoy wintertime reading, when we tend to be inside more often. Participants can win prizes by reading books of their choice. They write a very brief review, and bring those reviews in and enter prize drawings. There's a drawing every week, and it's as easy as just stopping in at Pleasant Hill and signing up at the service desk to get you started. I did bring along with you a copy of our winter/spring program guide. This is all the events that are happening at Pleasant Hill and at the other eight Dakota County library branches. The pink insert is just Pleasant Hill Library events, highlighting those that are happening between January and February, and then we'll have a new one out a couple of months later. All the programs are free. Some of them require registration, and that's indicated in the program guide. In addition to our programs, as I've mentioned to you before, we have public internet computers, we have free Wi-Fi in our building, we have free downloadable eBooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines. So if you've got a Kindle, an iPad, any kind of mobile device, please stop in, and we're happy to help you get started with that. I'm also here tonight to just briefly highlight the 2015 Hastings Reads Program. February is the annual community-wide reading event. You have a handout for that as well. Looks like this. The theme this year is Journeys: Riding the Orphan Trains. Between 1854 and 1929, an estimated quarter of a million children were put on what were called orphan trains, and were moved from the East Coast, primarily New York, and were moved out west. These were children that were orphans, they were neglected, homeless children, and they were taken into families in the West. The Hastings Reads books really bring the stories of the orphan trains to life through historical fiction. We have three book selections, like we do every year. The one for adults and teen readers is called Orphan Train, and this is written by Christina Baker-Klein. It's been on the New York Times Bestseller List, and we have the author coming at the end of February. She's going to speak to all the high school classes, and she will be speaking in the community the evening of February 24th. For the middle grades, we have a book called Regina by Karen Cushman. And for the elementary children, a picture book called The Train to Somewhere by Eve Bunting. So these are the selections, they're all historical fiction, and they all capture the stories of riders of the orphan train. So the handout has all the events on it. We're going to kick off Hastings Reads at Pleasant Hill Library on Saturday, February 7th, at 1:00 in the afternoon, with a presentation by Renee Wendinger. She is an author, she's the president of the Orphan Train Riders of New York, and she's the daughter of an orphan train rider. Hastings Reads is sponsored by a dozen community organizations, you know them well, they're all listed at the bottom of the flyer, and many volunteers come together to make this month-long, community-wide reading program happen. So I hope you will join us in reading these selections and exploring the history of the orphan trains, and I invite you to come out for those events and to stop in to the library between now and when we have some warmth in May for our Raise a Reader campaign. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that presentation. It was a great presentation. Are there any questions, counsel? Thank you, Mary, for coming out tonight, and we look very much forward to the Hastings Reads Program we do every year, and all the activities at your library and around the county.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, counsel, next item on the agenda is items to be considered. There are two items before tonight, you'll see it on your, at your desk. One is to add to the, both to add to the consent calendar, resolution for a one-day on-sale liquor license at the La Duke Mansion, and also a resolution supporting the, requested by the Minnesota High Speed Rail Commission, supporting the bonding request at the legislature for rail, state general fund for environmental assessment to upgrade the UP and BNSF rail yard. So... Okay, let me get there, and I will accept that motion. Next item is the consent agenda. Councilmember Loggia makes a motion to a move that both items be placed on the consent agenda. That's seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We now have the consent agenda before us as amended. Any further discussion? Councilmember Loggia makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion now before the body, is there any further discussion to that motion? Consent agenda as amended. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we go to community development. We have a resolution tonight to issue a Type II home occupation permit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. What we have before you tonight may look familiar from a year ago, and it is the issuance of a full occupation permit, home occupation permit, for the Estensons on Theo Court. As you may recall, home occupation permits are regulated as Type I, which can be permitted as right, and Type II, which requires some planning commission review and city council action. In the case of the Estensons, the trigger for the permit was having an outside employee within the home. So when we consider this in January of last year, sent out public hearing notices, we didn't have any comment at that point, planning commission reviewed it, recommended it unanimously as well as the council. One stipulation that we do have with those permits is that they're subject to a one-year annual review. And so that one-year period has elapsed, we've looked at it again, have not had any complaints or any comments from that, so we are recommending the issuance of the full permit for a five-year period. So, there is one amendment I would like to make upon the resolution itself. I don't think it stated a date that the permit would be good for, so that would be, it would be a five-year permit from the original, so it would be, I think, 1/20, 1/19 would be the date. So I will amend that resolution officially, but if you could consider that with your motion, I would appreciate it, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Also, is there an understanding that the change suggested by staff to fill out the resolution be incorporated? Is there any objection? Okay, that language is in the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Vaughn seconds that motion. That motion is now before the body, Councilmember Schultz.
I just have one quick question for John. Number two on the resolution says that the applicant should provide the planning department notice of changes that expand the business. So if they were to add additional employees coming into the home for the business, they would be in touch with you, and then would that, would that make this permit null and void, and will we have to have further discussion?
That's a good question. Yes, they would be obligated to notify us, council member. As far as how it would affect the permit itself, we would have to amend that, because it would change the details of the nature of it, so yes.
Here are another question.
Ms. Schultz.
John, is there a trigger point where it's no longer considered a home business and a number of employees, and then you have to say, okay, now you have to go out and get an office?
Sure.
Because he had an office and then contracted the business in terms of employees and moved to the house, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes. He did have a storefront within Hastings, closed that storefront, moved into the home. As far as having a limit on the number of employees, there's nothing specific within the ordinance itself. I think that would be, they need to report that upon the application, and it's something that would be considered by planning commission and council, and whether this would be the right fit for the neighborhood or not. Generally, what we've seen over the last few years is, under that provision, one or two, but more than that, I really haven't seen that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member. We have a motion before the body, is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution in regards to a variance request, minimum lot size in Ag District, Washington County. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. What we're looking at before us is the subject property owned by Don Sasky, located on the Washington County side of Hastings, just north of King's Cove here. The proposal that is being brought forward tonight is a variance request. The property itself is Zoned A agriculture, which has a 10-acre minimum lot size. Washington County, as part of their Point Douglas Trail construction, is looking to acquire about a one-and-a-quarter acre property located in yellow from the Saskys in order to build a transition of down the grade. So essentially, you've got the Point Douglas Trail proposed within this right-of-way, it would come through this acquisition area to transition into Highway 61, and then the proposal to construct that trail extension across the railroad bridges. So, that is the reason why this is coming forward, is at the request of Washington County in order to have that additional transition area for the trail itself. We did take this before planning commission at the last meeting, there was no comments from the public during the meeting, and the commission recommended unanimous approval of the request as presented. And one of the stipulations that we have added on to the variance request itself is that there would be a covenant placed upon the property so that it had to be used in conjunction with the other property owned by Washington County, so that it couldn't be sold separately or used for some other use in that area. So I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, since this is a variance request, at council level, it will require six out of seven votes, as determined by our charter. What's your wish? Councilmember Brooks makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Balsanick. That motion is now before the body. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, I'll just say briefly, I'm very glad to see this come forward, the trail is a priority for the community. This helps get the trail built in a safe manner, and I think that we're being very accommodating to help this out, so glad to see this before us. Without any further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails.
Thank you.
Next, we have before us a guest. Mr. Grogan is here to talk to us about the transfer of the cable franchise and change of control of the grantee. Many of you may recall that Comcast and Time Warner, earlier in 2014, announced that they were going to merger. That has ripple effects as to our local cable provider. We're very pleased to have Mr. Grogan here to guide us through this very technical process. So thank you so much for being here tonight, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm very thankful that he's here to get this presentation up, because that's where the presentation would stop if he weren't right here. So is it just the arrow keys then? Okay. For the record, again, my name is Brian Grogan, I'm an attorney with the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett, here tonight, working with the city on this transaction. To be clear with everyone, I am in this capacity tonight representing the city of Hastings, so with and through your city attorney. I don't believe a representative of Comcast or the other companies are here tonight, so I'll do my best to answer questions. You may have certain questions for the company, and if that's the case, I can certainly take those back and try to get written responses for you. This is a complicated transaction, I went through it with your utilities group earlier this evening. I'm going to try to keep this to about 15 to 20 minutes, but absolutely will be available for questions after. So this all started last February, when Comcast chose to acquire Time Warner Cable. Time Warner has been looking to get out of the business, so the combined company would take approximately 20-plus million customers that Comcast currently owns, combine them with about 11 and 1/2 million customers of Time Warner, and create a company that would have 34 million customers nationwide. I'm going to show you a map in a moment that kind of ill- I'm going to show you a map in a moment that kind of illustrates what this means. That particular number, 34 million, though, would actually create a communications company that holds in excess of 30% of all customers in the country, a threshold that the FCC usually doesn't tolerate. So, Comcast voluntarily agreed to divest itself of about 4 million of those customers in an effort to fall below that, that threshold, and really escape some of the antitrust concerns that they're fearful of at the federal level. So, looking at a map of this to kind of illustrate what this big transaction means, you can see the dot representing the Twin Cities market, that's where Comcast currently holds cable systems in the state today. The, I'm a little colorblind, but I would call that orangish-red is the Time Warner Systems, the blue are the Comcast Systems, and you can see why these two companies want to combine, they would end up holding control of most of the major top 20 television markets in the United States if this transaction ultimately gets approved. And I should mention that it is still awaiting federal approval, the FCC will act on this sometime in the first quarter of 2015, probably towards the end of March, so that federal approval is still outstanding. It is, though, not uncommon that cities have to act in advance of that, because we're held to a different statute. As I've commented before, the feds are usually good about imposing deadlines on cities for actions, they're not as good at following those deadlines themselves, so they give themselves a little more time to act on these transactions. This chart illustrates the top 10 cable operators in the country, and the focus on Minnesota, you can see the blue that represents Comcast, the green represents Charter Communications, the yellow is another company called MediaCom. But I want you to take a moment and look at the green, because Charter is going to come up in the discussion tonight, they will be, in essence, providing certain operational services here in the Hastings market. So, back to the original dialogue, we have 34 million customers with this combined company, they need to divest themselves of 4 million, they go out on the market, Charter agrees to buy 1.4 million, but they don't have the financial resources to buy all 4 million at one time. Comcast and Charter agree to that transaction, they also swap customers in certain markets to create some regional clusters that make sense for their business plan. That leaves 2 and 1/2 million customers remaining. So, for a moment, let's talk about Charter, because again, they're going to come back in this presentation. Charter's presence in Minnesota extends from Duluth all the way down to Winona, and you can see the list of cities there, they hold St. Cloud, Rochester, a number of large markets outside the Twin Cities metro area, which is held by Comcast. They serve 6 million customers nationwide in about 29 different states, they're Fortune 500 company. If this transaction closes, the way I describe it this evening, Charter's going to end up operating more than 10 million customers. In other words, they will provide operational support for nearly 10 million customers, a substantial step up from the 6 million that they're serving today. But back to that 2.5 million customers, so that's the amount that Comcast still has to divest. They couldn't find anybody willing to acquire those at the, under the conditions that they were seeking, so they decided to basically create a new company called Midwest Cable. It started out being referred to as SpinCo, which is a placeholder for a spin-off company, then they named it Midwest Cable. If this transaction closes, it will be renamed Greatland Connections. So, that is the name of the company, the doing-business name that they will have here in Hastings and throughout the metro area. Again, they'll have 2 and 1/2 million customers, the Twin Cities market will constitute 550,000 of those customers, so this marketplace will be a fifth of all the subscribers they own. They'll have properties in Minnesota, Michigan, Indiana, Illinois, all the way down to Alabama, which, as I commented to the utilities group, that's exactly why they needed to change the name from Midwest. Alabama doesn't consider themselves part of the Midwest, Greatland Connections, I think, is a better label for the company overall. They'll be a publicly traded company, assuming this gets approved, and the financial review, when you have a brand-new company, is extraordinarily difficult. You know, as I commented earlier this evening to, again, the utilities group, I've been asked now in many different council meetings that I've made this presentation at, you know, did you look at their financial history? Did you look at their past performance? Did you look at where they held franchises around the country? Did you call the mayor and city administrators in other cities? And the answer is, I didn't do any of those things, because they don't exist today. They are on paper a company that will, if this all closes, be created solely for the purpose of acquiring these 2 and 1/2 million customers. So, looking at financial history isn't going to tell us anything, they haven't, they don't exist, nor can I look at their technical or legal background to see how they've operated. Looking at how they fit into the picture of the country, Midwest is represented by those orange dots there, and you can see the Twin Cities market, the kind of darker bluish dots represent where Charter currently operates cable systems today. And you can see in part why these markets were selected, it's because Charter has operations surrounding where Midwest will acquire, and Midwest knows it's going to have to rely on Charter for several of these, or for much of the operational support. So, drilling down now more specifically on Midwest Cable, they will be controlled by a board of directors, they will be owned 33%, or 1/3, by Charter Communications, so by the corporate entity itself. They'll be owned 2/3 by Comcast shareholders, and there's a distinction between the ownership of a shareholder and the ownership of a company. Comcast itself will not own any aspect of Midwest Cable, they can't, because that's the whole purpose of this, is to divest themselves of that ownership interest in these subscribers. They'll have nine board members, interestingly, the chairman of that board will be the same individual, a gentleman named Tom Rutledge, who serves as chief executive officer of Charter. I know you're going to have trouble keeping all these names together, it's safe to say there's a very close nexus between Midwest and Charter. The two companies share many different synergies, those you can see that are listed here in this slide. They have hired a separate chief operating officer or chief executive officer for Midwest, gentleman by the name of Michael Willner, he has over 40 years' experience in the cable industry, and he's brought his entire executive team that worked with a company called Insight Communications to run this company. But as I mentioned a moment ago, they have no operating history, and really, there's, they're going to be relying substantially on Charter for operations. This is just a schematic to show what the structure would look like if you were to chart it out, it really just, in graph form, describes or shows what I described a moment ago. Very briefly, the timeline for action, typically, we should have been taking action on this within 120 days of the day we were asked to review this transaction, and the city of Hastings received the application in June of this year. So did every other city in the Twin Cities market, about over 80 cities received the same application. The reason we didn't take action within 120 days is because the companies weren't ready to explain the transaction yet. They were still submitting filings to the Securities and Exchange Commission as late as late December of 2014. So, they have voluntarily agreed to extend the deadline for your consideration of this transaction, the most recent deadline now is January 30th of this month, so to the extent the council isn't ready to take action tonight, I'd go back and get yet a further extension to allow you more time to consider this. Your obligation in this, under both your franchise and state law, is you're required to review the legal, technical, financial qualifications of this new company, and to decide whether it is sufficient to carry on the operations of your cable system here in Hastings. Local operations, we're starting now to drill down on exactly what the impact of this transaction will be to your constituents. First of all, the trucks that drive through your city, the men and women that drive those trucks, the technical employees, will all be Midwest Cable employees or Greatland employees. I'm going to continue to refer to them as Midwest, because that's their legal name as we sit here today. So, all those, that personnel will ultimately be employees, so will the government affairs personnel, the people that interact with your city staff, with your mayor, with you elected officials, those will also be offered the opportunity to be retained by Midwest Cable. But virtually all other operational services are going to be handled by Charter personnel. That's what makes this transaction so unique, it's not a straight, normal transfer where a new company comes in and that's who we're dealing with. Here, you basically have a new company coming in, that's going to have a substantial subcontract relationship with Charter, because they need that expertise that Charter provides in order to operate this system. So, we're going to go through very briefly what it is that Charter's going to do for you that Midwest can't do for you. First, it's important to note that Midwest is going to pay 4 and 1/4%, or $4.25 out of every 100 they bring in, to Charter to pay for these services. Now, that's just off the top, that's every dollar they bring in for voice, video, and data, so not just cable, every dollar they bring in, they'll be paying 4 and 1/4% over. On top of that, they'll pay actual costs. Every time Charter answers a phone, Midwest Cable will be getting a bill for that service that they're offering. Now, Midwest Cable won't have to hire all those employees and pay for the call centers and do all those things, but you can tell right now, there's going to be added costs that this company will incur that a typical pre-existing cable operator would not have to incur.
Councilmember Alonji, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, so, and you may have been just on the cusp of trying to then explain, and I know, early on, you said something on the order of like, well, we need to make sure we have this separate from that, but given that this is less efficient than having just a regular merger or acquisition of a kind, why are they doing this, in your legal opinion? What is, what is the advantage either to the company or their customers? Because this, the less efficient the operation is, the more I think it drives customers nuts, they don't know who's billing them, they don't know what these charges are, there's people, there's names listed that they don't understand, and they're already moving away from a company they've come to know and trust. So, can you explain that?
Well, it's a great question. I think that it's not so much as why did they intentionally structure it this way, it's that they couldn't structure it as a straight transfer to Charter. Charter didn't have the financial ability, at least as it's been indicated in the press, to acquire it today. The transaction calls for Charter, they cannot purchase the interest in Midwest Cable for at least three years, so this separation will exist for three years. Thereafter, though, the assumption, at least from reading the trades and from really reading the analyst's opinion, is Charter is extraordinarily well-positioned to then acquire this, because at that point, they hope to have the resources to acquire the additional 2 and 1/2 million.
Thanks, that answers my question well, appreciate it.
That's an important, that's an important fact, I think.
Absolutely, I think everyone would probably appreciate the cleaner path that you're describing, simply wasn't possible, companies couldn't put that together. This list is unique, and let's try to break it down to what it means for your constituents. If you currently take Xfinity Cable today, that's the branding package that we have when we buy Comcast services, that will change to something called Spectrum, that's the new brand that Charter uses today. If you're in Rochester, or if you're in Lakeville, that's what Charter sells you, is the Spectrum brand of services. That's what will be sold here in Hastings, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bloomington will all have Spectrum. All the programming agreements that support Spectrum, of course, are controlled by Charter. Since Midwest has no programming agreements, they're going to rely on Charter for all those negotiations. Now, important to keep in mind, no one has better programming agreements, at least anecdotally that we're told, in the industry, better than Comcast. They're the largest cable operator, they're able to negotiate stronger deals. By stronger, I mean more affordable deals that put less pressure on subscriber rates. The Charter transaction will result in higher programming costs. Almost everybody in the industry, though, in fairness, has higher programming costs than Comcast, so that wouldn't be surprising, but it's an aspect to keep in mind. As we go through this list, network operations, you know, all the folks that make the network run, the behind-the-scenes broadband services, telephone services, all that IT and engineering will be handled by Charter, not by Midwest. Those employees aren't coming over as part of this. Everything that runs the phone system, the voice operations, all customer service will be handled by Charter. So, when a Hastings resident calls for cable customer service, it won't go to a Midwest representative, it will go to a Charter representative that will be basically representing Midwest in that transaction. Midwest has, has at least commented that they may be acquiring a call center because of the volume of calls that they'll be handling, but they haven't committed to that yet. But the going down the list further, all billing, collections, marketing, sales, administrative back office, everything is going to be handled by Charter as part of this, what they call a Charter Services Agreement. Extraordinarily complicated, I've been doing this for 25 years, almost exclusively representing cities and counties in this, I haven't seen quite this relationship. You're always going to subcontract on a certain amount, this is a fairly substantial amount, though, to be dealing with. So, again, drilling even further now, what is the absolute impact on the customers here? If you have a Comcast telephone number, which I have at my house, I have a Comcast triple play, so I have their phone number, you keep that. We have in Minnesota, through the Public Utilities Commission, something called number portability, everyone gets to keep their phone number, no change there. Subscribers can keep their cable equipment, so if you have the Xfinity boxes, if you have the remote controls, if you have that equipment in your home, that will not need to be changed out, it is compatible with Charter's system. Of course, there's always the ability for them to change that down the road, but for the foreseeable future, no touches on that. Email is not as good a news. Those of you who have a Comcast.net email, if you take your service through Comcast, that will go away, they will no longer be your provider, they'll have a transition period, and then they'll notify you that you'll need to switch to a new domain name. Most likely, it will be Charter.com, Midwest doesn't currently have any domain names, so we assume that to be the case, they haven't committed to exactly what the email domain will be, but it could very well be Charter.com. That will be an impact on those subscribers that have relied on Comcast.net, it'll also be an impact for those that have run home businesses, small businesses using that Comcast.net. I was asked at an earlier city council meeting this month whether any of the companies would be providing support for those who have to switch out, business cards, letterhead, notification to, you know, business consultants, et cetera. The answer is that none of that has been offered at this point, they do offer a transition to say that they will maintain the Comcast.net email for a period of time and forward to the new domain, but there is no offer of any financial assistance. Another question maybe, well, why, Mr. Grogan, did you not condition our approval if we're going to approve this on that obligation? And the answer is, we only in Hastings have a cable franchise with this company. We don't regulate their telephone service or their broadband service at the local level, just their cable television or video product, so there's only so much we can do legally, and it really relates to their cable product, not to these other ancillary services. Billing shouldn't be a very problematic issue, it'll transition, of course, to Greatland. I'm a Comcast customer in St. Paul, I have it automatically debited from my bank account, so I don't have to write that check every month. I will have to call my bank and say, don't pay Comcast, pay this new entity, and I'll have to deal with that issue. Every one of those issues that requires a customer touch, if you will, if there's a disruption to a customer, is the possibility of generating more phone calls. If you have 550,000 people that have different issues on this, you can see the concern about customer service, and will constituents be able to get those answers when they need them? And that's what I'm going to describe here as we move towards the resolution. The financial review is a huge issue here, there is at least seven to eight pages in the transfer report that's part of your packet that describes this in fairly significant detail. It is not a fair comparison to look at this company and say, how does it relate to Comcast? Comcast is one of the most financially stable communications companies in the United States, they have very low leverage, very low debt, given the total assets that they control. The leverage that Midwest will have will be comparable to the operators that you see listed here, Charter, Cablevision, Southern Link, MediaCom, you know, but there's no question, there will be greater debt, they'll be taking on nearly $8 billion in debt to finance this system. So, it will put pressure on subscriber rates, it will put pressure on the amount of capital that they have available to improve the system. There's not very many other ways to look at that, and I think the financial report summarizes those. Now, in fairness, the company does provide what they believe to be some pro forma projections that they think will increase cash flow, and they think will actually operate more efficiently than in some ways it does today. So, there's no way to measure that, of course, the, we don't have a historical record to look back on that we can measure this particular model against, so I'll ask you to rely upon the financial review that's in the report as you make that assessment. The resolution, and we're nearing the end of this presentation, that I have before you, calls for an approval of this transaction based on conditions. First condition would be that the operating entity would be, that the performance would be guaranteed by Greatland Connections. So, Greatland is going to have different operating entities depending upon where you are in the Twin Cities, and whether you're in Detroit, whether you're in Indiana, they'll have, like any large company, they'll have a multiple number of operating entities. We've asked that the contractual obligations contained in the Hastings franchise will be guaranteed by the parent company, in this case, Greatland Connections, which we have actually attached as part of this resolution. If you choose to approve the resolution, you'll be requiring, as a condition of their acceptance, that they approve also that guarantee. acceptance, that they approve also that guarantee. All of this, by the way, I have already run by the legal counsel for Comcast, for Greatland, and for Charter, so I can represent that this, if approved by the city, would be acceptable to the companies. Customer service is the key issue here. And because this is in a state of transition, and frankly, the companies, this is their first time through this kind of a transaction as well, where you have this kind of a substantial service agreement, the best condition that we thought would make the most sense for the city would be to require face-to-face conversations with Midwest employees every quarter for the first 24 months of this franchise term, if the city desires it, where they're going to come out and explain to you how this transition is going forward, what steps they've put in place. Keep in mind that you have fairly aggressive customer service obligations under your current franchise. That expires in October of 2016, but as that sits today, you can enforce those obligations under Midwest. They step into the shoes of Comcast under this transaction. So, we've asked for that condition. We've also asked that they put in place what we're referring to as an escalated complaint program, meaning that if you have constituents here in Hastings that are unable through the 1-800 number to get satisfaction on their customer issues, they can contact your staff, they can contact Tom, they can contact anyone here at the city. The city can put them in touch with an escalated group of customer care individuals that the company has agreed to provide, that can troubleshoot that complaint, and then report back to your city's staff that the complaint has been adequately addressed. We think that's important because there are going to be people that are going to slip through the cracks on this. It's just too much transition, and this was a key issue that, that we wanted to see put in place. The company's agreed to provide that. Lastly, and probably least important, but still relevant for the city's budget, is they have agreed to reimburse all of your costs incurred on this. And I would analogize this to if you were going to approve a liquor license transfer, and you had to do due diligence on the new applicant, you would expect the applicant or the transforer to reimburse the city for that kind of cost. You'll be made whole in terms of all your costs on this. And in conclusion, what I would say is, if the FCC approves this transaction, obviously, these, this resolution will be effective as it relates to Midwest Cable, and it will allow the city to continue to enforce the franchise. If the transaction is denied by the FCC, you'll still get the benefit of the reimbursement of costs through this transaction, but Comcast will remain your operator. It will basically be business as usual. How that impacts your franchise renewal is, either we'll be negotiating with Comcast, because the transaction would be denied at the federal level, or we'll be negotiating with Midwest Cable. That will probably occur sometime later this year as we gear up towards the 2016 expiration date. So, this resolution should not have any adverse impact on your negotiating position during renewal. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I will pause and stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan. That's a great presentation and very complex, and thanks for helping us break it down a little bit.
Absolutely.
If I, if I may ask, you helped us negotiate our first or our last agreement with Comcast. I think many would agree it was an outstanding agreement, what we're, and thank you very much for your services to City of Hastings in that agreement. I am concerned in, when we get to October of 2016, if we're negotiating, let's say, with Midwest and not Charter, because, let's face it, down the road, it's going to be Charter. How that will play into what we might be able to extract in those negotiations compared to what we've already received in our current franchise agreement. Any thoughts on that?
You know, it's, it's going to be difficult to predict. What we hear from the Midwest staff that has come in, come in town, and we've met some of the executive staff, we being those of us who are reviewing this transaction, they have stated unequivocally that they expect to be the ones in the chair negotiating this next renewal, and that, you know, there's no guarantee that they do sell this system in three years, five years, or 10 years. They may continue to operate this system. They will be a separately publicly traded company. They'll answer to their own shareholders, you know, and to that end, they have a vested interest in seeing the system run and be successful. In fact, I think by the numbers that we've seen, they may very well be a Fortune 500 company the day they're created, based on the, you know, their total assets that they'll have. Having said that, the fact that the current chief executive officer of Charter will be the, on the board of directors, and will in fact be the chairman of the board of Midwest, I think what we're going to find is, there's going to be a great deal of cooperation between those two companies, and I suspect who you're going to be negotiating with as that renewal occurs, those two companies will be communicating very closely that whatever Greatland agrees to is something that Charter also approves of.
Gotcha. Sounds, sounds reasonable. Counselors, are there questions on this item? Councilmember Olajide?
Thanks, Your Honor. Would you mind going back one slide, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. So, I'm looking at the escalated complaint process maintained, and I understand that the Utilities Committee just mentioned this too, so forgive me if I'm repeating a question or if I'm going over territory that you've already gone over. My question's actually from Melanie. Based on what I'm understanding here, if there is a significant, I understand it wouldn't just be your run-of-the-mill, "I don't like what I just heard" sort of thing, but a significant complaint, do, what, have we estimated, do we have any sense of what kind of impact that would have on staff time? How would we manage that? I mean, we're, we're going to be put in the middle of a, you know, I, I just called the cable company, I waited 40 minutes, this is not necessarily against Charter.net, this is like any cable company. You know, I waited, I waited 40 minutes for this, that, and the other thing, I didn't get this right. It could be a customer user error, it could be the company, whatever the case may be. We are now going to be in the middle of that for the hottest cases. And if the service, if you escalate it, and you use whatever, let's say Julie, because Julie's sitting there, you know, so Julie is now, you know, the escalation officer for the city, and Julie takes that and relays that on to the, to the company, to their escalation team, and the escalation team comes back, and let's say they do a great job, but it's still not clear, or something's just, you know, just not, just not quite right, the city is now taking ownership of a cable box issue, and we are now in the business of doing that. I understand why it's necessary, good negoti, I mean, I get it, we're trying to get good customer service here. I'm just checking city staff's readiness, enthusiasm, cost, time, in this endeavor so that we can be, enter this with really clear eyes, because that's going to, it's going to take some of your time, it sounds like.
Your Honor and Counsel, we are always ready to help the public. That being said, I, I don't know how to estimate what kind of calls might come in. I can speak to the last two years or so, when I have gotten the calls, there've maybe been a dozen of them, and, and on the bill, it says your franchisee is City of Hastings, Attention City Administrator, and they've been fairly easy to resolve thus far. Comcast has been good to deal with and resolving it with, with the customer base. Going forward, I, I can't speak to it.
Sure.
But, you know that we would, we would be more than willing and obviously work to find resolution as quickly as possible. Maybe Brian has an experience that he could share.
If I could try to add to that, I, I think that's the right answer, is it's hard to predict. There is misery loves company, I guess, would be the, you have 85-plus cities that are going to be in the exact same position as you are. Some with dedicated executive staff that serve for commissions that will be doing nothing but handling this, and others that are in exactly your position where they have 100 other hats they have to wear for the city. This is just one piece of what they do. The expectation is that if there are hiccups or road bumps as they go through this process, that the Twin Cities market as a whole is trying to work together. There's been a lot of cooperation in this review with the other cities, whether I represent them or other attorneys represent them. We've been on the phone with the league, we've been on the phone with a group called MACDA, which is many cities belong to that kind of regulate cable operators. So, while it's hard to predict, I do expect that if there are significant problems, that you'll have the collective force of the whole Twin Cities market talking directly to Midwest saying, we need this fixed, we can't have our, our staff spending 20% of their time doing this. And then, I think what happens is you use your enforcement tools in your franchise. They'd be in violation of the customer service provisions, you draw from their letter of credit, you take out of their performance bond, you do what you have to. Not that we want to make money off of this, but what we want to do is get them to provide the customer service.
Sure. It's an incentive. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you for some of those remedies that you suggested. And I would also say that Tom Wright's here with Channel 14, as Executive Director, he has a lot of knowledge and helping us out, and I know, working with you, Brian, and I'm sure, you know, Tom Wright would also be a part of this process as well, and you'd probably get some of those calls too, Tom. So, I'm sure we would all work together trying to assure that, and I appreciate all of the work that you've done to get us this far too, Tom. The first email I got about this was, came from Tom with a good explanation about where we're going. So, I think we'd probably have future meetings ahead of us, I think.
A really super quick corollary, and thank you. And by the way, I'm noting that, that some staff have some really well-behaved children here, and so we're trying to be super, super quick about this. I mean, get it. Thank you very much. I've been there. Get it. I think even, I think even at 15 and 19, my kids not be as, be as well behaved as, as the two that are back there. So, well done. But, so really quickly then, Your Honor, I say that the next line there on that, on that particular slide notes that the reimbursement of all transfer costs. Is there any portion of an anticipated amount of staff time for the first year or so for any of that relaying? Is that any part of that reimbursement? Or is that, or is the transfer cost just the administrative?
At this point, it's limited to the out-of-pocket costs that the city incurred, so that, you know, it wouldn't have, it would have zero impact on your budget. So, I did not pursue anything beyond that.
Understood. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, the new company is going to be, what did you say, 7, 7 billion plus in debt?
Correct.
On this whole thing. Concerns about any, any kind of, if, if there's any kind of a disaster, whether it's homeland security-type situation, natural disaster, where there's going to have to be a, a huge influx to get things repaired, back up and running again, how are they going to handle this with the indebtedness that they already will take on?
Honestly, I, that's not a question I have, I asked of them, and I'll give you credit because I've been asked by a lot of different council members, a lot of questions, and usually, I had already asked those in written documents to the company, so I would be able to at least tell you what their written answer was. I don't know that I have an answer for, and let's take it out of the, the context of, let's assume a tornado goes through and tears up the entire system, and now they have, through lack of insurance coverage or otherwise, they have to rebuild this system. What resources will they have? I can say that the, you know, so far, they do not indicate they're having trouble financing this. They expect to have this fully financed by some rather, you know, substantial banks, although that's confidential at this point. Obviously, they don't finance if the transaction fails, it doesn't move forward. The fact that their debt leverage will not be substantially different than what Charter, Southern Link, MediaCom, and other companies, means that we would be in no worse position than those. But clearly, Councilmember, we will not be in as good a position had Comcast remained our operator, simply because they wouldn't have that same debt obligation.
Yeah, that's, that is a concern that I have. One more item, in terms, what do we need for a vote on this? Just a majority vote?
Yeah, we'll have a resolution before us, so once that's moved, and then they'll take a majority vote.
Okay. I have a question for our legal counsel. My wife and I own stock in Comcast, Dan. Should I abstain from voting on this, or is it okay to vote?
That is a publicly traded entity, that, that ownership interest not controlling, I don't see that as a conflict, but maybe if you'd chime in?
I don't believe so unless you hold, you know, some substantial interest in it. Frankly, probably everyone in the room that owns a mutual fund owns some portion of Comcast stock. To be honest, they are, they're fairly common to see in almost every mutual fund. On its face, I don't believe there's any conflict of interest. Obviously, the best gauge of that, though, if you feel as though you're in a position where your vote would be compromised because of that, simply recuse yourself from the vote, and there's sufficient numbers here where the counsel would still have a quorum to take action.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Your Honor, Brian, quickly, just to play devil's advocate here, what would happen if we voted no to this resolution?
Yeah, the, and I've been asked that in other cities as well. The scenario is not overly favorable if you vote no, and I think there's, we, I'm guessing a little bit here about what would happen, but in all likelihood, if the feds approve this transaction, whether it's the City of Hastings or the City of Minneapolis that denies this, it's still going to close. This is a 50 billion with a B transaction that covers almost every city in the nation, is touched in one way or shape or form by it, so it likely still closes. They would either close over the top of the city, meaning they'd close regardless of your denial, and then would wait to see whether you would in fact choose to impose liquidated damages against them for violating the franchise by transferring without your written approval. Or they would close around you, meaning they would retain ownership of Hastings on paper, but close everything else, in which case, they wouldn't have any employees left in Minnesota, so they would likely subcontract out with Midwest and with Charter to operate the system until such time as they are able to resolve the ownership issue. In both scenarios, there's, in almost in all likelihood, a, a legal challenge, whether it's an immediate injunction or just a straight federal lawsuit, and they would probably, again, this is all just me guessing, probably allege that the basis on which the city denied, assuming it's on legal, technical, financial qualifications, somehow was not a sufficient or reasonable basis on which to support the denial, and then we would be in a position to try to defend that, probably working through the League of Minnesota Cities to serve as our defense counsel. The question I've come to, when I've been really asked that question hard, and I've had to think about, the answer is, what is the ultimate objective that the city would be shooting for if it denied? And if the answer to that question is, we'd like this to not happen, and we'd rather stay with Comcast, because it's a, a more stable, more financially secure operator, the likelihood of us achieving that objective, given what I just described, that the transaction will in all likelihood close regardless, means we can't achieve that objective. So, while I could make plenty of fees handling the litigation, and while we could go down that road, if we can't articulate beforehand what our clear objective would be, it makes it difficult to understand what the path for settlement would be, and whether even if we prevail, we win the battle but potentially lose the war. And that's unfortunately the, the result that I see when I analyze the, what benefits you would get from that. I know that's not a politically popular answer, because it feels like you're painted into a corner, but given the scope of this transaction, that's kind of where we find ourselves.
Sure. Thank you, Brian. And, and one thing else to note, Your Honor, is that the Utilities Committee will be taking a look at the franchise agreement coming this summer into fall with preparation for 2016, when that agreement ends, I guess it would be at that point. With that, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the motion as presented.
Councilmember Nelson moves the resolution before us. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Olajide. That motion is now before the body. I want to thank Brian for this resolution. It does, in a sense, and, and I'll just throw it out to cover our butt, and it also allows us the room to negotiate in the future. And I think we operate in strength with this resolution as opposed to, to being no. So, we are positioning ourselves in, in a great way with the future cable operator in the City of Hastings because of this resolution, and I appreciate having it before us. Councilmember Schultz?
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I know the mayor almost always gets the last word, but I wanted to say thank you to Tom Wright, because he's kind of been in the know on all of this stuff all summer and has kept the Cable Board apprised, you know, and most of the time when we have meetings, he'd say, well, we went back to our attorney, and he said, we have another extension, and that's kind of how this has all gone forward, and this is, while the information is confusing and sometimes conflicting, I think it's one of those bitter pills you almost have to swallow to move forward, and I'm hoping that maybe we can get a really good franchise agreement coming in October of 2016, so.
Mr. Grogan, help us do that. I think we'll, I think we'll achieve it. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Balsanic?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay. Councilmember, for the reasons why, what you stated earlier?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no further discussion to the motion, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion, one nay. Councilmember Broxen, the negative. All those, the promotion, the motion prevails. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Public Works Director appointment. I'm wondering, Councilmember Olajide, that you pointed out some well-behaved children here tonight. I'm sure that it's in regard to this order of business. Melanie, I'll turn that over to you.
Your Honor and Counsel, it is my privilege to recommend the appointment of Nick Egger as our next Public Works Director. If you'll indulge me for a quick couple seconds, I'm just going to recap where we've been for the last several months. As you've come to ex- As you've come to expect, we do a very thorough hiring process, and, um, we had a number of staff involved in the hiring for our Public Works Director. It's a position that we haven't had to fill for a significant period of time, so we held one-on-one meetings with all of our Public Works staff, and got a lot of great feedback. We developed a very robust recruitment profile, um, and again, went through a pretty significant process with several, several interviews, with several scenarios that applicants were required to go through, and wrapped up with a, uh, an interview with the Administration Committee of the Council, chaired by Councilmember Schultz, and Councilmembers Balsanic and Vaughn, um, and Julie and I were both in attendance, and it is our recommendation, being brought forward to the full council, that Nick be, um, appointed as our next Public Works Director effective February 21st.
Okay. Uh, council, that item is before us. What's your wish?
I make a motion.
Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Uh, who's the chair of the Administrative Committee? Councilmember Schultz, did you want to add on to that?
Well, as Melanie pointed out, it's been a few decades, or three, since we've had to, um, have a discussion about, uh, this position, so, um, I, I'm sure Nick realizes that he's got some big shoes to fill, but, um, it's going to be a good transition, and we wish Tom the best as he retires, and we look forward to working with someone who's a little younger than me instead of maybe about my same age. So, um, thank you, Tom, and congratulations, Nick, and it was nice to see your family.
Welcome to the family, absolutely. Glad to have you here. Okay. Uh, we have the motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? See none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Uh, next, we have, uh, the naming of the dog park. Chris, welcome to the meeting, and I bet you're going to update us on how that all happened.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I was hoping to, uh, find a graphic here for you, but maybe, maybe not. We don't have the shared drive here. Do we?
You talk, I'll derive.
All right. Over the past, uh, three months, the Parks and Recreation Commission has gone through the naming process for the newly developed, uh, off-leash dog park here in Hastings. Our first attempt with our new, uh, naming and renaming policy, and, uh, it's, it's gone well. Um, we invited the public to provide suggestions for names for the facility. We had park and rec commissioners, city staff, anybody was welcome to provide suggestions. We had somewhere along the lines of 25 suggestions for names, um, and the Park and Rec Commission met, whittled that down to three names, the names that were in the memo, Rivertown Dog Park, Rivertown Bark Park, and Ravanna Tales, uh, Dog Park or Bark Park, I can't remember. Anyhow, um, the Parks and Recreation Commission-
Which one is it here?
It is in the shared drive-
We just have partial access, it looks like.
Under management team.
Ah, I failed, I'm sorry.
I didn't know the right place to put it. So we'll go on. The Parks and Rec Commission has recommended for council approval Rivertown Dog Park. So that is, uh, it's up to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Uh, just, uh, this is a matter of, of facts, how many proposals were there for names? How many, how many did the commission, uh, consider?
23 officially, with, um, two or three additional that were combinations of those that were submitted.
All right, thank you. So there was a whole host of possibilities there.
There was a wide variety of names suggested, yes.
Uh, council, the site is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanic. Rivertown Dog Park is the one that is before us. Is there any discussion to that motion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Mayor, I have a quick question for Chris. Um, I'm new, so could you educate me a cliff, cliff note here on the city recently adopted a formal process for naming parks and public places? Educate us, or educate me?
Sure. Within the past, I'll call it, three or four months, um, we've adopted a formal policy for naming or renaming parks, park facilities and public spaces, and, uh, pulled from a variety of different communities their, their, uh, policies that they had, and, and developed one through the Park and Recreation Commission, and ultimately council approval, one that fits Hastings. So it, it requires three meetings of the Park and Rec Commission to be able to fully develop and really think about the names that have been suggested in, in the whole process, so it's not a, uh, it's not taken lightly. There's a, am I getting where you want, or?
It is, yeah, for future, I'm just curious how-
Yeah. And, and that process can be started by a group, an individual, um, a business, if anybody has a vested interest in, in a particular facility and they want to, uh, suggest renaming that, that's the process they can go through.
That's what I was looking for. I'm just curious about what is the process to go with that.
Melanie?
If it's helpful, good. Councilmember Vaughn and Brox, I'll send that policy over to you. As Chris mentioned, I think it was probably fourth quarter that we adopted it. Um, prior to the policy, we didn't really have a formal process, so, um, I'll get that in your hands.
I was starting to get a lot of ideas for naming things, things, uh, for various reasons, and we thought, you know, we didn't, by looking up, we found out we really don't have a policy to do that, and so one was established, adopted in the fourth quarter, and now we're actually seeing it, uh, probably our first time under the new policy.
First time, and the second's underway.
So, this is before us now. Councilmember Brox?
I have a question, um, for when we adopt the name, if we do so, are we going to put it on a sign somewhere, or how is it going to be used?
Absolutely, we'll have a, and that was the graphic that I was intending to show tonight. Uh, two things with that, yes, it will be on a sign, it will be at the, the facility, um, and then there's a new look to what our park signs may look like as well with the new city logo that's, that's come out, so.
The only thing I have observed since I've gone down that way and taken my dog there a couple times, is sometimes since it's around the curve, you can almost miss driving by it because of the positioning of it, so it'll be great to have a sign there directing people into the parking lot, because I almost drove by it a couple times.
It does need recognition, but if you drive by, feel free to visit CP Adams Park.
If your dog's on a leash.
Yes.
You know, I've been out to the park about three or four times. It's very popular among people out there, particularly among the dogs, and, you know, if only dogs could vote, uh, we'd have a whole new constituency here.
Some cities they can.
Yeah, some cities they can, but not these. But it's, and, uh, I've enjoyed talking to the folks that use the dog park out there. It's been, um, it's been remarkable what, what, uh, the, uh, the excitement that, that people have for the, for the area, to bring their dogs out there, let their dogs recreate with other dogs, and, um, uh, I've been very impressed, and it's only been half-open this year, I mean, the whole thing doesn't open up till next year, once the seed gets, uh, established, isn't that correct, Chris?
It is, yep. We've got about three acres of, a total of seven that are open right now.
That's right. So it's, uh, more to come. Okay? Uh, did we, we have the motion before the body? Is there any further discussion to the motion? See none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, comments from the audience? Are there any comments from the audience this evening? Okay? All right, anything from the, from the kids? Do they have anything to say?
Proud of you, Dad, proud of you, right?
Okay, great. Uh, no comments from the audience tonight, council announcements. Councilmember Alagi?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Two committee meetings coming up, uh, for which I'm pleased to be the chair. Uh, the Planning Committee meeting of the council will be meeting, um, help me out, Melanie, Thursday morning at 7:00 AM. Uh, and so we will be discussing a couple of other things, including propane containers and a couple of other things, uh, that are of, of interest to staff and council, and perhaps constituents. And then the other meeting will be at, uh, 6:00 PM on Monday, the 26th, as the Public Safety Committee, uh, and we will be discussing, uh, some of the progress on the recommendations for, uh, the fire, the Public Safety Department, Fire and Rescue, uh, at that time. Uh, and so looking forward to good thoughtful contributions from, uh, staff, from council members, really appreciate all the work that I know has already gone into both of those meetings in advance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for those announcements. Any further announcements, council? Hey, Councilmember Vaughn?
I do have, my first Red Rock Corridor Commission is on this Thursday at 4:00 at Condes Grove City Hall.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Keep it a surprise. That's good. Okay, thank you. Uh, council, I just have, uh, before I get into my announcements, I have one request under, uh, I have a few members of the community talk to me about the intersection, uh, at General Seaborn Drive where Target and Cub converge, right at General Seaborn Drive, uh, some of the safety concerns, uh, that that may or may not have, but there's been a lot of discussion about it lately, because I've been, uh, been contacted about it. Uh, I'm wondering that in the future meetings of the Operations Committee, uh, Councilmember Balsanic's committee, that, uh, if you can place that on the agenda, just as to where we are with that. I know when we talked about that, uh, intersection at one time, that we would monitor it, because we didn't know if it someday might turn into a situation where we ultimately put stop, uh, four-way stops at Pleasant, uh, Frontage Road. You know how we did that? So, um, I'd like the Operations Committee to take a look at that, maybe gather some data as to, uh, are there been a lot of frequent accidents there? Uh, is there, uh, is there more ways to mitigate the situation to be safer, or are we just at a point right now that it's operating based on data what we expect to operate? So, I'd like to have the Operations Committee, you don't have to call a special meeting to do it, but the next time it meets, to place that on your agenda, uh, if I may, uh, make that request. Uh, as, as far as announcements, uh, I will be here tomorrow morning at 10:30 AM for the State of the City address, from 10:30 to 11:00. I hope they get everybody out of here. You get me talking, and then you might be here a little longer, 11:30, or 10:30, but till 11:00, but, uh, I'm going to try to keep within a half hour or so. Uh, the event will be broadcast on KDWA Radio Live, and will also be on Channel 14, uh, but tomorrow's the State of the City address, and talk about what we've done in 2014, what we look to do in 2015, and some of the visions that we have, uh, put together. So we'll talk about that tomorrow. Uh, this Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM, Senator Seaborn and Representative McNamara will be holding a town hall meeting here at, uh, Hastings City Hall, uh, this Saturday from 9:00 to 10:30 AM. The Planning Commission will be meeting here in this chamber on, uh, Monday, January